Seeing none, we move on. If there's an issue of people, leave us to pass this around before we make our comment. Please let me know. We can certainly do that. We're hoping that wouldn't be necessary tonight, but it's certainly a possibility. So, moving on. Next is a notice of public hearing. The City County Planning Board had a meeting concerning a zone change request on Tuesday, April 11th, and it will come to the City Council on May 1st at City Hall. It was concerning a request by Chris Anderson to amend the zoning map from the current zoning of SAG 5 to SAG 10. That's changing from 5 acre area to 10 acre. All right, I will move on. I would ask that you folks refrain from clapping or anything else as we are making our deliberations. Keep you on that. Because that is what was going to happen tonight, but there's not going to be any more public testimony that was taken at the last meeting. The purpose of this evening's meeting is for us to make our deliberation and to rule on the request for a zone change and a PUD. So, that being said, I guess we can move forward. I'd like to have some questions. We submitted some questions to staff at the last meeting to have some answers. So may I hear the answer from those specific questions from staff at this time, please?
The question regarding water and sewer capacity has not changed since February, since the February memo with the HDR engineering and, sorry, water engineering with our capacity. So did that answer the question from council?
I know, there were questions from staff. Did you guys remember what your questions were and directed, and have they been answered?
So my question was, should I take the microphone just to make sure everyone can hear?
My question to the staff last meeting has been, with this development and the possibilities of others happening around the city, if there was enough water and sewer capacity to take care of multiple developments? And we had to answer in affirmative as she had mentioned that it hadn't, the information had not changed since February, that we do have water and sewer capacity for multiple developments. So that was the question I'd asked last meeting to be answered now.
Anyone further, or council? Any questions? No? I would ask our attorney, can we move forward with discussion before we have a motion on the floor concerning the zone change? Or do we, would you prefer that we had a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I think.
So, yeah, Mayor, we should have a motion on the floor before we proceed with discussion and deliberation. Sounds good. All right. Council, I would ask for a motion on staff report, CZZ 23-01, its findings of fact. Have a motion, please.
Motion to adopt staff report, CZZ 23-01, as findings of fact.
Second.
And I have a second. So at this point, we will move to discussion concerning the zoning request. So who would like to start?
Oh, you want me to start?
Sure. You want this?
No, I don't know. Can you hear me?
No.
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 Can't hear any of you.
Well, I can sure speak louder if you need it.
That would be good.
Well, in my opinion, I've seen, what I've seen in her, the short-term vacation rental is it will decline. I hear housing becoming available now. I drove around the city today. I was surprised. A lot of things coming up available that it was, but it was not available before. I think we're on the tail end of this pandemic. I don't think we're out of it, but we're close. I don't think we've had things play out. Flooding the market, to me, with new housing is not the answer. If nothing, in my mind, the growth policy has protected that area to the east of the river. I believe it was, if it was left in the county's hands, there'd already be septics and wells, and we'd be inundated there without much say. So I think the growth policy has been a good thing for the east side. I think as a warning, something's going to develop there. I'm not sure how and when. If we stay to the growth policy, I'm better off with that. We'll end up with mansions that nobody can afford if they choose to build, but that's where we'll be. I personally cannot support the zone change.
Oh, okay, I did have one thing. Looking at the growth policy goals, one of the goals that this council set up, I guess would have been 2019, it was reaffirmed in 2019, was that development near environmentally sensitive areas should be accomplished so that these features are left in a relatively underserved state. I kind of see that as something that we're talking about, that's an environmentally sensitive area over there. And I'm a little bit concerned about that. I think it's a great subdivision design. I really do. There's been a lot of work put into this and everything else. I'm just really not comfortable with, one, the fact of where it's at anywhere else. As long as we could get it hooked up to municipal services, I would champion. But that and the problem of access, I really, after reading through the reports and, trust me, I've read through them all more than once, I must say that our traffic, I'm not happy with the way that the traffic is set up. Number one, our access from existing river road from a really crowded area now is unhindered growth of Plummy Falls stage, and Middle Road has caused that intersection on that side of the bridge to already be a serious problem. And from what I can see, there's no concern, well, there's really nothing that says that that is going to be addressed. What they're talking about is realigning the other side on the north side of the river and then by adding two more accesses. I have a problem with that. Number one, I think that the safety problem, it does not say that they're going to put in a stoplight. And even if they did a stoplight, there's going to be two accesses. With the way people drive now, as traffic increases in the summer, I can't imagine what that's going to look like if we got construction traffic and more traffic coming off that side of the road. I think it'd be extremely dangerous. And we've spotted accidents in that area for over 30 years, so I know what I'm talking about when it comes to that. The speaker last time concerning the amount of time that it takes people in misjudging closing speeds, and boy, that's the truth. And if you put that in there, the way people drive now, if they think there's a hole there, they're going to go for it, we're going to end up killing some people. So those two things, and also the fact that we really don't have a plan or an assurance that we're going to get the folks that are there to the other side, to the south side of the highway, to our path that has been built. I think that should be number one concern. If they're going to do that, we need connectivity to the city, and that can be accomplished by getting people safely across the highway at that point. We're talking about quite a number of people, so those are my concerns. I just want to make sure that I had everything. Yeah, so we'll pass this down.
I only have like one comment. We have been dealing with the east side for now 19 years. I'm 74 years old. I won't be dead, but somebody will have something built there sometime in the future. If not this one, it will come. The problem with going west is Mr. Safer's property is not for sale. Go talk to Billy. He has no desire to sell any of that property over there. So you're going to landlocked the city. When you become stagnant, what happens? You die. So you just remember this, that I said at some point in the future that we'll be building there. Because a lot of what you folks have said to me are feelings and emotion and very short on facts. And that's all I have to say.
I would have to say that I concur with the mayor in terms of my concerns about traffic. Other developments that might take 10, 15 years to build out, the way that this one is designed, I feel like would build out very quickly and would fill very quickly. And the amount of traffic that it would generate, it wouldn't, it'd be quick. And I don't think that that area is ready, and what I've been reading isn't ready to handle that.
I'd like to echo something that John said earlier about development is going to happen one way or the other in the future. And it's about whether it's going to be million dollar homes or more dense, more attainable housing. And that's something that I struggle with when looking at this development and other developments that have been proposed in this area. Because I am okay with increasing density there. I think that if we get this denser housing that is a quarter mile from city services and a half, excuse me, and about a mile from the downtown core, I think that's overall a pretty good place for it. And I also think about if we remove ahead with a zone change like this, when it came time to do recommendations and a condition during development, we could condition a stoplight there that if the developer did not have permission from the NDMT to put a stoplight there, then that shuts down the development. Am I correct on that? Am I right here?
Yes.
Okay, so we've talked about that in, okay, so we've talked about that, the planning board had talked about that in past developments. Because, yeah, I think that's, any sort of dense development on that side of the river needs access to the great path system that's already there so that people could walk and bike into the community easily. So whether there's something on the north side or the south side, I think we all agree that some sort of stoplight there would be absolutely critical. And I am fine with a zone change that increases the density there, and I'm okay with extending city services across the river.
Anyone further? Like to speak? Okay, that being said. We have a motion on the floor to adopt staff report, CZZ 23-01, as findings of fact. Before we do that, before we move to vote, I have a question. Do we need to specifically show items that we disagree with on the staff report to not adopt it?
Well, just for clarity, your, the staff report you're looking at is the one that was amended by the planning board with their changes. Yeah, so essentially, should, I guess if you strongly disagree with either any of the findings within that report, you could amend or add to those findings to support your decisions. So you could do that prior to taking the vote and then just vote on each finding that you, whatever you wish to amend.
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned with some of the items that were added by the planning staff, by the city county board. I don't think they're relevant to the sections that they were applied to. I think when we have to approve something in, something of this magnitude, I think we have to have a clear understanding of why we're approving or disapproving. I think there are several issues with the county, city county planning board reasoning in turning this down. I don't know whether those need to be corrected before we move forward. Or, as said, I would like to add one thing, and that is, I don't believe it's substantial compliance with the growth policy due to the fact that it is an environmentally sensitive area. So I don't know whether that should be added as a comment or that, or a reason for denial. So I'll ask, staff's idea, what do you think about some of the things that I found that I didn't agree with?
I think that would, that would be good to add to the record, to the findings that if you as a group don't agree that this project complies with the growth policy, and you have some examples of particular goals or policies, that would be good to include in the staff report.
Okay, so does that need to be put forth as an amendment or just a discussion?
As an amendment, as a motion to amend with your specific question. So, yeah, you had development near environmentally sensitive areas should be discouraged, something to that effect. So you definitely want to add that as a finding and then get a vote on that finding, and then if it passes, that becomes part of the findings of fact.
Okay, I would ask, without me searching to myself, what portion of your staff report would that refer to substantial meeting in growth policy?
Number one of the evaluation criteria, Mayor.
So if there's any wish on this council part to add that, I would ask for a motion. If no motion, guys for lack of a motion. All right, not seeing a motion now, not yet.
Sorry, I was just about to sneak. I'd like to make a motion to add an amendment saying that the findings of fact do not, in number one, do not comply with the growth policy in terms of whether it is an environmentally sensitive area.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear a word you're saying.
I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to add an amendment that says under number one, in terms of whether or not this complies with the growth policy, that it does not in terms of the environmentally sensitive area.
Do I have a second?
I'll check it though.
Which has been made and seconded to add an amendment to the staff report? All in favor of adding that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
We have one, two, three, four, five ayes and two noes. Please note that. All right, so that will be added. Also, as far as the number two in the staff report concerning transportation, I would also like to add that because of the river road access on the south side of the highway not being realigned or redesigned, I believe that would cause an issue with the constant travel flow and safety in that area. There again, if anyone agrees with that, you can look at making that amendment, number two.
I would make a motion that we, I would make a motion that we add into number two, a better plan than the vagueness that was offered here for the traffic.
Second.
Which has been made and seconded? All in favor, senior five, I saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? If it passes, add that as amendment. Another thing that I was not real happy with was on item three, the planning board put a statement in there, and I don't think it applies to what they were trying to accomplish here. I would like to see that struck as their addition. Anybody following me on that one?
I am. I have something else.
That highlighted paragraph on page six of nine under item three. I also did not think that was accurate, and I knew that we strike that paragraph.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, senior five, I saying aye?
Aye.
And shall be deleted. Item nine, and I'll just throw this out, I guess mainly for discussion, again, density to read for the particular suitability in the proposed zone. Is this land suitable for the density that's been requested for through several different factors? I don't feel it is, but I really don't know whether we need to add another amendment to that or not. Anyone else have any further amendments we would like to add at this time to the staff report? Seeing none, we will go for, oh, I wouldn't remind everybody that we needed two-thirds vote on this because a majority, the case of landowners, did disagree with this, and consequently, we need to have a two-thirds vote in order to pass this. Property owners protest in excess of 25% is what's facilitating it. So at this time, we will please restate the motion for us. Okay, I will. Doc's staff report, CZZ 23-01, is findings of fact, and it's been seconded.
May, have a question, clarification.
And just to be clear for all of us and for the audience, we are voting on this staff report which was previously used to deny the zone change, that the facts were saying we used to deny the zone change is what happened there. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Right, this time I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Hamilton?
Opposed.
Counselor Levering?
Opposed.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Opposed.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Mayor Barnhart?
No.
Did we reach a threshold of two-thirds?
I need to ask a question.
Yeah, I think this needs clarification.
Yeah, I think if you were voting against...
Could you speak in the microphone, please?
If you're voting to turn down the zone change, I think your vote would be aye or yes.
That's exactly what I thought.
And if you, so I think, I think you probably need to redo this vote.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that, Eric, and that's as much my fault as anyone, so if we disagree...
We're accepting the findings of fact with this vote, but this is not the vote on the area.
What?
I was just going to say, so we are approving the findings of fact as amended. This is not an approval of the zone change. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
But to be clear, these are the same findings of fact that the planning board used to deny the zone change. Am I correct? Am I confusing things further by saying that?
And their chief finding of fact was that the facts as presented by planning were not findings of fact. They did not approve them, right? But they approved them as amended and presented them to you. So you are, if your intent is to deny the zone change, then you are voting in favor of the findings of fact as amended by the planning board. Thank you.
I should explain.
Yeah, that's my fault. Thank you. I should have explained that. So we will really leave the last vote, and we would start again.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Levering?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Once again, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye. Findings of fact are approved as amended. Consequently, do we move forth with looking at the PUD, or again, are we, as we have disapproved, we have not approved the zone change, are we in the same position as the planning board was?
So now you have findings that you've adopted, so now you have to vote or have a motion to approve or deny the zone change. And so that, then you would vote on that motion, and then the zone change is done, and then we'll move on to the PUD.
Okay, understand. So we would need a, I would need a motion to approve the zone change?
Motion to approve the zone change and require staff to prepare the ordinance.
Second, which has been made and seconded by Piper. So now a vote in the negative would be to deny the zone change. Is that correct? All right, can I have a roll call?
Counselor Levering?
No.
Counselor Piper?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Shepherd?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Hamilton?
No.
Mayor Barnhart?
No. The motion failed.
Our planner, Renal, tell us, do we move forward on our PUD?
Yes, you should move forward on your PUD, but again, as the planning board did, you would recommend denial of the PUD because it no longer conforms to the underlying zoning. So in essence, it can't function with the SAG 5 and 10s.
Okay, I understand. Can I have a vote? Do you want to have discussion before we move to vote, or may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to deny the PUD as it is not in compliance with the denial of the zone change.
Second.
Is a negative motion allowable?
Yeah, it's your motion. You're clear, Jenny, in saying that your motion is to deny based on the fact that it is not in compliance with the underlying zoning. So it's your motion, you can make it, and that's what you're voting on.
Okay, I just want to make sure it didn't have to be a positive motion. All right, so at this time, may I have a roll call?
Counselor Piper?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Shepherd?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Hamilton?
Yes.
Counselor Levering?
Yes.
Mayor Barnhart?
Yes. Alright.
Okay, thank you for your attendance and standing on this issue. And I must make one comment before I'm done here. And that is, the amount of work and the thought that went into this subdivision application by the proposers of this is great. I think their subdivision idea is wonderful. I think it's housing it as much needed in this municipality. Unfortunately, it's in the wrong spot. And as time goes forward, I hope that the developer will find an area close to Coney Falls where we can use our city municipal water and sewer and bring that middling area of rentals to this area. I think it's much needed. Right. At this time, I'd like to take a short five-minute break. Thank you all. In back order. Moving on, we will have approval to declare a 2014 Ford Police Interceptor vehicle obsolete.
Mayor and council, this is a statutory provision of retired to give notice in a fifteen-day public comment period to dispose of surplus obsolete or unwanted senior property. This 2013 Ford Police Interceptor has been used as a travel car. Some of our young trainees just left, but they've used this to go back and forth to Hana and taken out of service. It has 112,000 hard miles on it. And we ran the wheels off and are requesting that council approve the declaration of obsolete. And we will give our notice and intent to sell or dispose of it.
Council, I'd ask for a motion.
I move that we declare the 2013 Ford Police Interceptor obsolete.
I will second.
You have a second on the motion to declare that obsolete? All in favor of the vote? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Alright, next. Second, final reading of ordinance 824. An ordinance amending the Coney Falls zoning map to allow a PUD for a property located in 812 Fourth Avenue West. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the second and final reading of ordinance 824.
I second that.
Which has been made and seconded to approve a second reading of ordinance 824. May I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Levering?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye. Second and final reading ordinance 824 is approved. Reports business, mayor and council. Who would like to start?
I'll start. I've got nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Jenny?
I just want to thank the city for trimming back that tree on First Avenue East that was almost into the roadway between Seventh and Sixth. Because now you can see around that corner, so thank you very much.
Now that spring's here and it seems backyard parties are in vogue, I think we need to send a reminder out that we're not supposed to be having nine-foot bonfires in the city. Not only is it dangerous because it's so dry, but you know, it's rather obtrusive for the neighbors who are afraid to say it. My neighborhood, they came to me and asked me to pile up the plank, which I did call 911 that evening, right? And it's ridiculous what I actually saw that evening for a city. That's more out in the country where it's unzoned and you can burn whenever you want. So, I think we need to send a reminder out, Susan. Small fires only. Correct, Chief? Former Chief? Former Chief?
Yeah, campfires are allowed in town. I can't remember the diameter, it's less than three feet. And flames no higher than two feet, if I remember right. So, yeah, people do need a reminder once in a while. It's just like people burning their leaves, smoldering their leaves and pine needles in their backyard taking care of the neighborhood by doing that. And that is, again, prohibited.
Okay, Arbor Day celebration is May 5th at Warner Park. Our partners will be there on 10 DNRC. The U.S. Forest Service starts at 11:30. And the Glacier Gateway Fifth Grade Class will be joining us. And so will the mayor.
Reminder, April 22nd is City cleanup day. Love our city, let's go out there. I want Hollywood's there that morning, please. April 22nd. It's a Saturday morning. Let's go eat the garbage.
I have nothing. I just had a couple of things. One thing I did notice on, I don't look at a lot of social media, but one thing I did look at is about the painting on the upper end of the old garage. Who's responsible for that? Don't we go down there and paint over another shit?
It is Flathead County's bridge and they were notified promptly. And they will go down and remove the graffiti.
Okay, have you done that to pass?
No.
Oh, I obviously have some impression we have.
We removed the graffiti from all of our property, but that's the counties above, and their folks come, they do some special paint.
Oh, okay. I have one other thing I just wanted to make a comment on. Hopefully, on this behalf, on behalf of the largest council member here, I hope. And that is, the decision we made earlier was due to the diligence by this council. By taking extra time, we had an opportunity to digest what we were looking at. We took into account all the comments from our citizens. And because of that, this council made the decision that they made tonight. I would just like folks to know that we welcome public input, but it's going to come down to a group. And I'd like this council to make these decisions based on facts and information that we asked for. So, I just wanted to make that clear to everyone. Thank you. City manager, report?
Mayor and council, I put a little reminder notes on that. As you know, the railroad street sidewalk is a transportation alternative grant that is managed by the state. We're just a partner that pays 13.42%. We had an extensive review meeting and they requested an additional $5,917 for surveying. They decided they needed to survey that right away, which translates to about $45,000. So, the contract that will be coming forward, they're planning the engineering throughout 2023 and then construction in 2024. I thought they would be constructing this year. It's a sidewalk and then three blocks of bike path on Fourth Avenue West. But the wheels turn slowly. So, our RACE grant that we're working on, our final contract, that too would be engineered throughout 2023 with construction 2024 through 2025. And then, you can see our EEA grant on 12th Avenue West is progressing full speed. They're working on the road. And you can see on that change order that was on your consent agenda, they found a lot of surprise black dirt under their not good base material. So, there was an adjustment. However, you can also see on that change order, we didn't build a temporary road. So, there was some savings. So, it netted, that change order netted. But I'm sure it didn't surprise any of you that there was black dirt under that summer county roadway and less gravel. The, my other, the mayor had asked about the resort tax and we had talked about it before. So, evidently, there's some chatter about the resort tax. Just as a reminder, the tattoo parlors were deemed a luxury early on. Now, not every luxury is listed in your code. We try, life, what are they called? Necessities, necessities of life are listed. Early on, barbers and hair salons were deemed exempt. Because if you go back, even in PHHS requirements, hair and shave, I think John would probably be familiar with that at the vet's home. That's a necessity of life. The, what we missed, however, because of the, we tied resort tax to our business licenses, but not, there are businesses that are exempt from getting a state license. And if the bill was signed by the governor, I think we won't be able to issue business licenses at all. So, that'll make it interesting. But lashes and nails should have also been on there as a luxury. So, we talked once about, do we want to review the code? It seems like when you end up with a big laundry list, it gets a little more convoluted. But, but there has been no change in the city code. Barbers and hair salons were exempt as a necessity of life from the get-go. So, if there's any other questions or if you think the resort tax committee needs to meet, but that's, we'll clarify that with the appropriate business owners. And I audited the resort tax. Actually, this weekend, I audited the resort tax collections. We have 207 active businesses. That's all I have, Mayor.
I have a question for you. Would you like to report on our transportation committee?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as many of you know, we became an urban transportation community in 2013. So, that was kind of the push for our comprehensive transportation plan. We met last week and reviewed both the TA grant, which is on network, and our RACE grant. The RACE grant, Fourth Avenue West and 13th Street are also on urban transportation routes. So, despite not putting in any money, the State of Montana Transportation Commission has to approve our project. But one of the things that we discussed was whether or not we call for a priority project because the RACE grant starts at the truck route, Third Avenue, all the way, sorry, Third Street, all the way south until 13th and then cuts over, right? So, we rebuild all of fourth. The TA grant doesn't touch the road pavement. TA grant is just transportation alternative, so it's the sidewalk and a bike path. During our two and a half hour TA review, there was concern about matching aligning the pavement. And then, I called it no man's land, right? Because we have this nice bike path, but nothing done with the pavement. So, the Transportation Commission voted to, as a priority project, to do at least, call for a project on the three blocks after railroad street, right, first through third. Ideally, all the way around the corner to Nuclear Avenue. Because that's urban. To the east is Highway Secondary 486. That's not urban, that's state secondary. So, to our name, now, urban transportation works just like a transportation alternative grant whereby the state selects the engineer, they do the design, they let us look at it and make comments, but they're the driver. And so, we did, the committee voted unanimously to ask for a project as a priority project. This was the first time, though, they came back and said they want it engineered with projected costs or at least some preliminary engineering when we put in the request for a project. That was kind of a surprise. And Mayor Barnhart's been on the committee since it was formed, obviously. And they didn't have us do that before. But we do have, to our credit, 1.7 million. And I would sure hope we could do three blocks and maybe even the other three blocks with 1.7 million. So, the one thing that the city would have to do is look at replacing the water line because the RACE grant, the federal grant, pays for the replacement of the water main underneath. We don't want to put brand-new asphalt down, nice new roadway with old infrastructure underneath. But the city would have to replace the three blocks of water main from railroad street to third. And it is, it's a wide, you come around, the railroad street is 70 feet. You come around that corner and it's 100 foot right away. So, the good point that Mayor Barnhart brought up at the committee meeting is that water main, it actually isn't under pavement. Because there's so much room there, it's off to the side. So, we would have to look at, how could we do that project, right? How could we get that project, do three blocks of water main? Can we do it not with a scope amendment with RACE, but in conjunction with the RACE grant built? And I did forget to mention that the Fifth Avenue East North, our Water ARPA project, construction starts May 2nd. And that's a real short, there's nine service lines and a water main and a fire hydrant. So, that'll move quickly.
Have you heard anything back from either our representative or senator on our concerns about the zone? You know, the zone change, we're going to be putting duplexes and triplexes in my backyard if somebody wants to build it and I sell it.
No, I have not.
Not a peep? I haven't heard either. In fact, I haven't heard from either one of all sessions.
Go ahead. I know what they commented about that transportation meeting was, their suggestion was we do some preliminary engineering before we put our requests in. But I think we have a really good opportunity because the engineers right now are working on the RACE grant, designing everything. So, they're going to already hopefully have a lot of the engineering already done included in that. I'm not sure whether we're going to, well, I'm sure we would have to have them work for the city and complete that to get up where we're at. So, it is going to cost us some money upfront. I think we have to be looking at that in the near future because the construction on the RACE grant on the fourth is going to happen very soon. Have you talked to the engineers at all about that?
No, not since the transportation meeting.
Okay, and then, the engineers on the RACE, doing the RACE grant or the same ones that we have a contract with? Is that correct?
We haven't selected, we have to get the agreement with Federal Highway Administration, a signed agreement before we do the request or proposals to select the engineers for RACE.
Yeah, just so everybody's aware of that. I mean, it'd look kind of silly if we have this fourth goes down there to the turn there on the truck route and all of a sudden, our nice road quits. If we have the ability to continue that up past the old Plumcrack warehouse, that would be wonderful with curves and gutters and stuff. That's all I have. Let's see. See the attorney? Nothing tonight. Alright, see no further business?
I will let it be adjourned.
Which has been made and seconded for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn.